Reporter just beautiful.
Looks really, really very professional now.
Yes, it does.
Can we get the old one?
Yeah.
Arvis.
It's kind of, it's kind of like after yesterday, the whole, I could actually drive on the highway and not see anybody. It was really quiet yesterday.
Like to call the Cook County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting to order. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think there are some adjustments to the agenda. I see a couple.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. We have one that was submitted, but because Julie wasn't here last week, I'm not sure everybody's agenda reflects item number six, Bill Lane Land Services, representing a conditional use permit request. And then the one to add is approve supplemental material with statement. If we could just add that under item seven. And the last one is Valerie?
Good morning Valerie.
What is it that we needed to, you needed to have the board approve this morning?
The DM PG funding, it's an annual grant.
It's just to accept a grant, and it would have been in the consent, except the consent that was done prior to, to the regular deadline. So if we could put that under seven as well.
And seven is the new administrative.
Seven is, yes, administrator got bumped onto seven. So electronically, the one I'm looking at has Brian Silas, Todd Smith at four, Brian Silas at five, Bill Lane at six, and then Jeff Cadwell at seven with the two additional items.
Great, great, thank you. Do I hear motion to, or are there any other adjustments? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? So, thank you.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Okay. At this time, the public is welcome to address the county board on any matter of county concern. When invited to speak, please state your name, address, and the topic you are addressing. Members of the public may speak respectfully for up to five minutes, and the public comment period is limited to a total of thirty minutes. Issues will not be debated during the public comment period. At the board's discretion, the board may agree to schedule matters addressed during public comment on the current board agenda or on a future board agenda. All discussions will be civil in nature and must be directed at the board, not at members of the public. So, Arvis, I think you would like to speak, right? Thank you, welcome.
Good morning, Arvis Thompson, District One. Well, I'd like you to know that today you almost won. I almost didn't come in. I made myself a promise a few weeks ago that I would try to be here on a fairly regular basis and address issues or things of concern that I hear in the community, and today it was really tough. But, I persevered, and here I am. As I was driving through down sixty-one into town the other day, it occurred to me that I suddenly knew what this community was looking like. It's looking like a theme park. It's looking like Disneyland. It's feeling like, as I watched the people, a sense of urgency and looking for fun and trying to make the, you know, something happen that isn't the reality of what I believe this county is, or what anybody mission or goal or purpose is. And then I said, well, maybe we don't have a mission or purpose or goal. Or it's clouded, it's not clear, and people aren't operating from the same beginning, the same base. And it's the only way I can figure out that we do things like six hundred and forty acres for bicyclists. Where's the six, and I may be wrong, I hope I am, but if that is indeed the case, then where's the six hundred and forty acres for all the other sports that are out there? Where's the money going to come from to fund them? My challenge for today is to say, I hope there is a bigger purpose that protects the community that we all think we love, but we're going down a path that doesn't seem like we're protecting anything. We're sacrificing everything that we have for a dollar and the dollar is called a tourist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Arvis.
Consent agenda, is there anything, anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? I would just like to recognize D. Oh, D, letter D. Where's D?
A, B, C, D?
Excellent, okay, recognize D. So we'll pull D. And actually, I have a question about C, but it's probably just a detail that I'm, I'm missing a point on. So, I'd like to pull C as well. So...
You're first, you're C.
Okay, well, would we like to accept the agenda as amended?
Consent agenda.
Consent.
Yes, consent agenda. Where's D and where's the consent?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. All right, so... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so the C, I just had... I'm curious because the, this, I may have read this wrong, but the Minnesota Department of Transportation work order, the expiration date is June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Is that... It just seemed odd that we were approving something, a partnership contract when the expiration date is already passed. But maybe I misunderstood it.
I'm sorry, what, it's very likely a typo. What page are you looking at, Madam Chair?
It might be a typo. So it's, there are the two letters, and then the third page, which starts State of Minnesota Work Order Under Master Partnership Contract. The expiration date, under Article One, the work order contract will expire on June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Or when all applications happen.
Yeah, that, it's not a typo, it's just a clarification. So, the, what's in here are the two letters clarifying the contract for the next period and a copy of the past contract.
Got it, so this is the past.
So that's, that's the past contract with the past date, and the clarification in the letter is that for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen winter season, the previous rate of sixteen hundred and sixty dollars per lane mile will now be seventeen hundred and fifty dollars per lane mile. So this is just a continuation of regular business, and we're adopting our agreement with the state to provide services. So I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, when you look at that, that's last year's contract.
For comparison's sake.
Yep.
And just from the rate change, got it. That's the only question I had about that. Does anybody have any question about that? Are we ready to approve that one?
Motion to approve C.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. And then we have the hiring of Stacy Hawkins in the auditor office, and that's a, that's a replacement of a situation where people are moving up in the office. And so Stacy has been hired. She has been here, completed her probation. So, go Stacy.
So, do I hear a motion to approve the hiring of auditor support specialist?
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Support or body.
Okay. Are there any opposed?
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify, Stacy has been working in a temporary position, so now that she's been hired, she'll begin a probationary period. Correct.
As a full, as a permanent.
As a permanent employee, so.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. All right. So Todd Smith Assessor, you're up, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Apparently I've created a little bit of a stir, which was not my intention. So I'm here to explain what we've done with the request by the assessor's office for profit and loss statements by the resorts that we've sent out. Annually, we send out a resort clarification form. Basically, it's, it's required by the states that they determine how many units they have for rental, how many days per year those units have, how much, how many days they're rented, actually. And that helps us to determine which classification they fall under. In most cases, it's mon pop classification, which is the most preferential to resorts. It's the lowest tax rate, it's what most of them generally operate under. Those conditions, they operate less than two hundred and fifty days per year. In asking for the profit and loss statement, I'll give you a little history here. Our CAMA system, which stands for Computer Aided Mass Appraisal, is provided by Emsys. That's our computer regional support company. They have just now installed what's called an income module into our computer system. That income module allows us in the assessor's office to do a different form of appraisal, the income approach to appraisal. There's three approaches to appraisal. Our main system is the cost approach, which is how we develop a value. We measure all the buildings, the structures, put a value on land, and combined together gives us our valuation, which is what we use on our valuation notices. The income approach allows us to use the, the income derived from the resorts' actual records, profit and loss statements. It's a, it's a formulary that just gets plugged into the system, and basically, it gives us another way of double checking our work. And it's, we're just beginning to do it now, I haven't even used any yet, so I thought I needed to have some data going forward to do this. Now, in my request of this, this request is purely voluntary. I'm not, I'm not demanding this of anybody. The letter is a little bit misleading, where it asked to provide a profit and loss statement, we're going to correct that. Everybody that I've talked to and handed out the request forms this year, I've explained to them that this is, this is voluntary. Nobody has to give this to me, I'm not requiring this of anybody. So I've gotten some feedback, some people have said, no, they don't want to give it to us because they're afraid of sharing that information. The information is confidential, it's locked up in my cabinet, in my resort boards, and I'm the only one that sees it. So, I've tried to explain to enough people that this is a voluntary thing, and I would say forty or fifty percent are actually returning profit and loss statements. So, a lot of people aren't, aren't that concerned about it, because it's just another tool for us in the assessor's office to try and do our work, try and backcheck, do a second way of evaluation of properties. Questions?
Yes, Commissioner Starley, questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Todd, you did cause quite a controversy. And so, a few phone calls and texts were given to me. And I would have to say that professionally, it didn't look very good. Because on this particular business statement, it was handwritten. Profit and loss will be kept confidential.
That was a sticky note she put on after the fact that she did.
And so they have no problem, you know, dealing with the state. But there's no way that they want to submit what their profit and loss is. So it was just the idea of how it was presented. If it had been the letters indicating your CAMA system and how all of that would play into their profit and loss, it might have appeared a lot better. So, I've assured them that you'd be before the board today, and you would explain it, and if they're not listening now, I will ask them to, or personally, I'll call people back just to say this is only voluntary, but it did come across pretty, let's say, tacky.
Yeah, and I, and I looked at, I looked at the letter after the fact, and I said, yeah, it was a form letter we used, and we mailed, because this is a mass mailing, we mailed this out to every resort in the county. So the people that we're talking to up the Gunflint Trail right now, I'm able to speak to them and give them their letter, and explain to them right, one-on-one. So, some of them are saying yes, some are saying no, and that's fine. I mean, I mean, this is, like I said, sheerly, sheer voluntary. And I, and I'm, I'm trying to gather enough information so I can actually use what they've installed in our CAMA system, so that it's a tool for us. We're going to change the letter this next year, I'll handle the calls, I'll do whatever, so that we can, we can say, look, this is voluntary, why we're going to use it. We're trying to keep the letters, you know, the mailings as small as we can, but in this case, it's the, it's the same thing that they receive every year, other than the profit and loss statement that's in there. So, once again, it is voluntary, I'm not requiring this, the state does not require this. This is something we need, we need to have this information so we can develop an income valuation of these properties. And I apologize for that happening, it wasn't my, it wasn't my intention, and...
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Kirk. Thank you for all the work that you do in your office, it's not always pleasant. Commissioner Bush.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw.
I got some of the same text messages, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's kind of a complicated issue, and I understand where people are coming from. They don't want to, they're worried about the information. And a few people have asked me, well, can't we just derive that information from the, from the monthly sales tax thing? Well, we can't, because that's all lumped together by areas of the county. We have the West End region, we have the Gunflint, we have the city of Grand Marais. And it's just compiled on a, on a large, on a mass basis, so for us to try and derive what the sales are, and on top of that, that only gives us sales, it doesn't give us, give us the profit and loss, which incorporates the expenses of a business as well. That's part of the formula we use, so. It's better that I'm having these conversations in person. I don't obviously have the time to do that with every resort, but we are working towards finishing, and as a note, we have like five resorts left up the trail, we're done. So we'll be, we'll be finishing up, and then we'll be starting on our work, our land work. So, we're almost there.
I just had a question too. I know that had I received that letter, I would have, my, my paranoia, my paranoia would have been tweaked, for sure. And I've always been very sensitive as a businessperson, sharing that information, and particularly for tax reasons. I mean, it, but, so I'm not clear, so it's backup information. It's not, will it eventually be used, so I have a couple of questions. Will it eventually be used for tax assessment purposes totally? And will it be extended past resorts to commercial businesses? I'm just curious about the movement of this.
Firstly, this is, we're not the first county, obviously, that this has happened. Most counties already have income valuations in place, and they do that. For commercial businesses, generally speaking, and I'll, and I'll put this in context for you. As a business owner, if you were going to go out and get a new mortgage to buy or upgrade your business, you're going to have an appraisal done. That appraisal is going to incorporate all three approaches to value. It's going to incorporate the cost approach, which is the cost of building your buildings, the land. It's going to incorporate the market approach, which they're going to compare your business to other businesses out there that were similar and recently sold, and it's going to incorporate the income approach. The income approach is actually the most valuable to bankers. They want to see what your rate of return is on your, on your investment, on your property. So the only way to do that is to develop the income approach. And generally speaking, all commercial appraisals have all three approaches, including the income approach. So most people weren't totally unaware of what this was about. But some that hadn't had an appraisal done for a long time, or really didn't understand the three approaches, were caught off guard. So this is the same purpose. For us, our cost approach will always be the primary valuation source that we use. Because it's, it's, it's the basis for the CAMA system that we use. The income approach will just help me back up and find it, and have a different source, a different way of valuing property, of developing what we call a cap rate, which is a capitalization rate, which is a rate of return on a property. Those are, those are terms that most people don't understand, but it's something that we use as just a backup for the information that we have. And yes, eventually, we will be using this on all commercial properties. We won't necessarily value them just based on the income approach. We will balance both the income and the cost approach, and the market approach.
Commissioner Kirk. So vacation rentals aren't commercial properties. Are we going to be able to incorporate this on vacation rentals? Because they're bringing in some serious dough.
The issue with vacation rentals is that, right now, all vacation rentals are classified as seasonal recreational properties by the state of Minnesota. The use is fairly well defined. We don't have a lot of, a lot of choice as to how to, to change that classification or how to rate them differently. In actuality, when a property, when a person buys a property and they use it strictly as an investment and use it most of the year for a vacation rental, and let's say it's a single-family home, and they're renting it out for nine months of the year on a vacation rental basis, and they may use it for a month or so themselves. Where are we going to find that data? Unless they're advertising, or unless they're going through a vacation rental management company, and they're willing to provide it to us, we won't know. In answer to your question, I honestly believe that is a commercial endeavor. It's just like a motel. It's, and we all know what issues and problems that that's created here in Cook County. So, it's, it's an ongoing problem, not just here in Cook County, it's all over the state, and it's very large in the entire country. The state of Minnesota has not given us direction yet as to how to handle that. If I have information that would tell me the profit and loss on having a vacation rental home, I would use it, and I would, I would use my income approach to derive a valuation on that property, so.
I'm still a little tweaked by the whole concept. But, but again, it's my first time with the information. But it does feel a little like double taxation. I mean, you're, you're already taxed on your income, your profit and loss statement annually, and then to have, be assessed, that's part of your assessment value. I see a real separation there, but this has, it's not your fault.
Yeah, to help clarify that, it's not taxing you on your income. The income is just giving us a formula to calculate valuation based on that income. This is how almost all property, all income-producing properties are valued. They're valued on the income basis. They develop a capitalization rate, and they apply that towards a, what your, what your market is doing, and you arrive at a value. That's, that's general income valuation. So it's not based on your, it's not based on your income alone, there's a lot of variables in there, but the income is what develops.
It's kind of like the dark store, where the other counties are facing, where the stores are going out of business, and so those values, they want reduced because they're no longer generating business, and they're trying to use their profits, and then the other businesses around them are trying to reduce their values, stating that having an empty building next to them, so it's kind of, it can go good or bad.
Yeah, I can see where it can be valuable for...
This is a really big issue in, in other parts of the state around the Twin Cities. So-called big box stores are all going to tax court, to all the counties, because they're trying to reduce their value, because those commercial taxes are fairly high, in comparison with else. So if they can get their valuation reduced based on an income approach, and that's what they're using, is the income approach. Yeah, it uses, it goes both ways, and then, then they go to tax court, well, the tax court has to consider all this. First thing in tax court they're going to require is an appraisal that's complete, all three approaches. And if their income approach appraisal on their target store shows up as being less valuation than what the county's office has on it, they may make an adjustment, so. It's a, it's an important tool in, in all valuations, not just from the government side, but for, for business side as well. And most business owners that have been in business for, let's say, a short period of time, resort owners that have bought those resorts in the last four, five years, they've had income appraisals done. So they, they understand what they're used for.
Very, very interesting information, thank you, it's...
I hope it helps.
My awareness is...
Like I said, we'll handle the calls, direct all the calls to our office, and I'll be glad to explain.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, in addition to Todd, also, given a real brief update that they're nearly done with, with the valuation work for this year, which means they will have completed the five-year, first-year, five-year cycle and brought us to compliance. I know we shared it in a weekly newsletter about Rachel passing her test and becoming certified, but I'd like Todd to share that exactly, so that I get it right.
Rachel has now passed all of her tests, and she is, which was the four initial tests that were required to become a certified Minnesota Assessor, and she got her certificate from the state. So now she is a certified Minnesota Assessor. So now we have three assessors in our office, we're all, we've all met the guidelines, and she is still doing the technical work, and we've been out a few times in the field, so I will, I will work her into our field work as, as needed. Her work in the office is very valuable on a technical basis. I, we couldn't operate without her doing that, so. And I think having, her having the education now, and what we do as assessors out there is also valuable for her to understand exactly how it all comes together, so. She's done a good job.
Yeah, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Todd, I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm curious. When you complete this last phase, which is the Gunflint Trail, what would be the net appraised increase for that whole area since the last time it was done, which could be who knows when?
We haven't had time, we won't have time to compile that in, in a while. We'll know that when we put all our numbers together by the end of the year, as far as what our net increase is. And it will be an increase, because generally speaking, as we're doing these properties, Bob did almost all of the cabins, which he did about nine hundred and fifty properties. So he was busy this summer, and now we're working on these resorts together. And generally speaking, the resorts are going up some. You know, we, as we changed the data that we've collected and put it into our new system compared to the old one, there was no consistency in how these, in when these, these resorts were done last, or most of the cabins. I saw, I saw initials and dates from late nineteen ninety-eight until two thousand and ten. So they were all over the board. So nothing was really in compliance with that. So, the good thing about valuing and looking at the whole area is that, plus, there's been about five resorts that have sold in the last three years. Gives us a lot of good data on sales and what's happening with the resorts. And everybody I talked to at the resorts especially has said they had a really good summer. It was a great summer compared to three years ago. Said three years ago was still pretty rough from the economy, but now things have picked up very well, and they're all very happy with how the summer went. So, and some of the prices in the, in the, in the resort sales, they kind of reflect that, especially the ones that took place in the last couple of years. Means the market's coming back, business is coming back, things are happening, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kirk. The point of the valuations wasn't to increase our base, it was to make it equal and fair, so that when your neighbor has a twenty by forty garage that they're not paying taxes on and you are. So it was more about being fair and having the correct data filed.
Well, and as I've stated before, equalization is, is the prime directive of our offices. Is to try and make sure that we have all of the information available to us. And, and we have all the buildings on that were there, there was places we went where, and I think I've, I've talked to enough people where they understand that if it hasn't been reviewed in a number of years, and we don't require a permit on buildings that are less than a hundred and sixty square feet, a lot of those buildings have gone up. There's a little misinformation out there about that, because a building ten by sixteen doesn't require a permit in Cook County unless it's for housing purposes. Then it doesn't matter what size it is. And that was the misunderstanding that most resort owners and other people had. So, as a consequence of that, we've picked up hundreds of those small buildings and cabins, so. It will affect the overall valuation, the overall valuation will go up. I don't think there's any large surprises that I've seen so far, that, that valuations are going to increase severely in any one particular case. In most cases, they're staying relatively close or going up slightly, so.
Thank you, very informative morning.
We should do this more often. He's kind of busy.
As we come into compliance with this five-year plan, I'll be glad to hear finally that Cook County's in compliance, because there's still a lot of counties out there that aren't. A lot of them aren't even trying, so. If we can do this, then we can say categorically that, yes, we're in compliance, and equalization is, is what we're striving for. is, is what we're striving for. After this, this next five years, now we can just work on the fine detail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian. Morning, Brian.
Morning. First off, I need to purchase a new vehicle for Rowan. Rena and Rowan have requested to get rid of the one that he has. It's, it is 112,000 miles, it's rusted out. The brakes failed on it at one of the tower sites a week ago, we had to have it towed in, and it was late on a Friday afternoon, so we had to send somebody out to bring him back, so. She is a little concerned about him being out at these tower sites and not having a dependable vehicle. So my recommendation is to take our pickup that we have, give to him, and then order a little bit bigger pickup for my department. Since we are hauling more and more stuff and now that I have Raleigh working with us once in a while, we haul three people in the pickup, so. That's why I'd like to get a little bigger truck.
Very good. Questions or comments, Commissioner Desha?
I seen Rowan's truck, he needs a different truck. He needs a different truck.
He does.
Okay. Commissioner Burstein.
No questions.
Commissioner Kirk.
How many miles are on your truck?
Twenty-seven thousand, it's fairly new. It's a 2012.
Can it handle the tower out on Desha's territory there? That's, I've heard a horrible road to get to.
Oh, it's already been out there a couple of times, he's using it right now to get around, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sterling, any questions?
Okay. I think you need a Jeep, those can get through anything.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the second thing is, just for your information, the Legion is going to put a plaque out in our flag area out here, the Veterans Memorial for Don Wilson. It's a eight-by-12 bronze plaque that they're going to put there and dedicate it on memorial, or on Veterans Day on the 11th.
Okay. So. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Yep, thanks.
All right. Okay. Bill Lane.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got one item that was presented to the Planning Commission two weeks ago, an unusual conditional use permit request in that it doesn't have any context within the ordinance. We have shoreland rules, Minnesota Rule 6120 in chapter, or section seven of the Cook County zoning ordinance, which identify a primary and a secondary residence in shoreland area that doesn't extend out to non-shoreland area. Now, what we typically have are conditional use permits for multi-tenant dwellings, duplexes, and that sort of thing. And, and given that context, because we don't have any firm basis within the ordinance, we, Land Services opted to extend section 10.02 of the Cook County zoning ordinance, which allows us to establish a conditional use for a use or intended use that doesn't necessarily have a firm connection in the ordinance. So it, we're, we're kind of creating a, a new category for a conditional use permit here. And just as a refresher, the Edlands own about 40 acres in two separate parcels up on Hyridge Drive, up in Schroeder, off the Sugarloaf Road. And their intent all along has to, been to create somewhat of a family compound. There's no intent to rent it out, there's no intent for vacation rentals or anything like that. And when we originally had contact with them, they're, they indicated that they were willing to do whatever was necessary to facilitate the creation of their compound. And, and that's, that compound sounds very authoritarian and stuff, but it isn't. It's truly a family use property, to the extent where they have converted, they're building new residents now, they have a secondary cabin that they've re, reconfigured, and they've established a residential unit and a garage. And so what they've also done is they've installed two separate septic systems. So they're kind of going above and beyond what would be necessary, and I think the Planning Commission recognized that, that this was, this was really a cautionary conditional use permit. There was absolutely no concern about it, other than, you know, that there isn't a connection between the non-shoreland and shoreline use. So the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve it, and it was forwarded to you with the recommendation that you also give it an approval.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Commissioner Sterling, any questions, or comments?
Well, my comment is they've done their homework and they've figured out how they can accommodate their family and how they can keep the original cabin too. And so I think with the information that they gave the planning and no comments negative there, then appreciate that you're willing to work with them too.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirk. As odd as it is, when you look at it, they're at the end of their road. They've got 40 total acres, and then they're surrounded by, you know, the lambs have everything around, and then you've got Superior Hiking Trail below it, so you're not negatively impacting your neighbors with this property. And so everything they've done so far in the ownership of this land has been what we look for when we're looking in Land Services, it's to protect the environment, to protect the property, and to not change the environment. So it's an odd request, but it's not out of line.
Thank you. Commissioner Burstein.
And I have no problem with it.
Commissioner Desha?
No question.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Are there any opposed, or is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And we're still on schedule. Good morning. Good morning.
Thank you for the addition to the agenda. This is the annual acceptance of the Emergency Management Performance Grant from the Department of Public Safety, Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management. It is the program that funds our emergency management activities and is matched by the county. There are no significant changes, this comes in every year around this time, and I'm just seeking the board's approval to accept that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sterling, any questions or comments for Bill?
Just glad that the grant is coming through again.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Kirk?
No questions.
Commissioner Burstein? Commissioner Desha? Great, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second? That's good call, Sal. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie. All right.
Madam.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the, the next item is, Commissioner Sterling brought a question to Brady Powers last week about whether or not we could add the supplemental material to the proposed tax statement. And I, I think you'd all seen the proposed supplemental material. So in reviewing the statute, it appears that we really ought to have the board make a motion to include the supplemental material in our mailing. The, the statute says that the, the governing board, with the consent of the county board, can include supplemental inter- material. And, and so this is the proposed supplemental material, and I think we should have a, a vote of the board to say, yes, let's include that in the mailing with the proposed property tax statement in November.
And Madam Chair, I was at an Arrowhead meeting and that came up in, in regards to mailing supplements with the statements, and it was, I think you better check into that with the statute and just see if you can do that. And so then I called Brady and.
It's, it's more restrictive with the, the property tax statement that comes out in March. I mean, we're able to, to combine that with the assessor's valuation notice, but there isn't anything else I'm aware of that you can include with that. A lot of people would like to include things with that, but always had to say no, but this one is, clearly is allowed.
Well, thank you for checking that out.
Thank you. Commissioner Desha, any comments or questions before we vote on that? Commissioner Burstein?
I'm just confused, because Mr. Power said that we didn't have to have approval for this, but we're doing it anyway?
It's, it says it's allowed, but you have to approve it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You have to look at it, know what it is, and make sure that it's. We can't put anything in there, it has to be related to our budget and explaining, in this case, I think it says explaining the services, I think that's primarily what that does.
So it's, it has to be this type of material, yeah, and approved by the board. Thank you for clarification.
Commissioner Kirk.
That's interesting. Since we're not the only ones that do this, other counties put these in. We, we stole this idea.
All the ideas are stolen.
Thanks for checking on that.
Madam Chair, as, as just a point of clarification, yes, this came up and we developed this information piece as a result of the Legislative Conference in September and the fact that Association of Minnesota Counties was working to help counties push more information out to constituents with the proposed taxes. And I could read that statute and have it say that we, you just need to know, I, I could read that statute to say that you do know and nobody objected, but I think the cleanest way to read it is to say that if, if we're, if we have this and we're proposing to put this in that mailer, that if we have a motion from you, then, then we fully comply with the intent of that statute.
Thank you. And Commissioner Sterling, did you have anything you wanted to add to what your previous comments were?
And I just wanted to say thank you to Valerie and to Brady and to Jeff for putting this piece together. I think it shows our, our step in our becoming more transparent and gathering great information, summarizing it, and communicating better with the public, and so it's, it's a very clean, wonderful document. I'm really excited about that new step in our professional development. I just, it's fantastic. So with that, any further discussion?
Do we have a motion?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Support, thanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Is that your only thing this morning? Okay. Great, thanks, Jeff. Commissioner Concerns, Meetings to Note. Anyone have a meeting they want to talk about? Commissioner Burstein?
Yeah, I guess, Jarvis brought up a point this morning that I should maybe talk about because I'm on the Sotomayor Steering Committee. We've had two meetings facilitated by A R C. And at, you know, it, we just had our second meeting, and at that meeting, we are going to put out invitations to multi-use groups in the county. Because the thinking is that this should be used by locals, this area, the 640 acres. And so there was an identification of all the users and county governments or other, you know, agencies and so forth that would be impacted by this or have some interest in it. So, yes, it's going to go out to the snowmobile group, you know, ATV group, and a whole bunch of others, horse group, dog group, could rattle off quite a few of them. And hopefully, they'll be able to develop some kind of interactive map. This isn't a done deal yet, but there's going to be an attempt to do that, where these various groups could indicate, you know, where they think part of their, you know, activity could take place or where we'd be best for it. It's going to be an interesting process. The land has got some limitations about what can be done, and I know I took a site visit last week, two weeks ago, with David Damer, who knows that land well from his work with the county and on this project in the beginning, so, you know, there's limitations what can be going there. But yes, it's going to have an emphasis because of the funding stream, you know, to be a regional park that will attract. I have been an advocate, I just would like to say, for not to exclude or preclude consideration for housing, and so I think the group has acknowledged that, that there are some areas, especially this one area that's across the Gunflint Trail, that could be used for residential housing development. And also a little bit area of, area north of the hospital. So I just felt strongly that we should not eliminate any possibility that in the future, if it's feasible, you know, from an environmental perspective, but so. But there's, both of the land will be a regional park, and the whole idea that it, of course, is to attract funding from the legacy and.
So this is the 640 acres?
Yes.
Okay, and it's not a bike park?
No, it's going to be, no, I think there was some confusion in the beginning because there was some bike people involved, but now we're in a process where it's going to be opened up to all multi-use groups, not only in a local sense, but in maybe, you know, an attracting tourists or visitors or whatever that may be. So I think that has changed a little bit with the perception maybe that some people have. So it's wide open to, you know.
And isn't part of this to kind of define that area so that when we're all gone in 10 years, someone else doesn't come in and turn it into a 10-foot building with, you know, this is going to go out, look, he's going to build a 10-foot building with, no, 10-foot, 10-story building with all these housings. I mean, you're kind of setting the stage for what you'd like to see on this property in 10, 20, 30 years.
Well, I, I guess the answer to your specific comment, we haven't got into the types of buildings that would be there at all.
Okay.
The intention of this is, there might be some areas that are suitable for housing.
Okay.
But that would have to go through a change in zoning and everything else, so, you know. But yes, this would be sort of something that would attract legacy funding long-term, long-term, so I'm sure it'd be multi-years of funding and so forth. It's a, it's a unique area, it's quite large, but most of it is, you know, environmentally not usable. There's a big wetlands area on the top, and then you've got this large, you know, just like a cliff dropping off down that whole ridge up there, so. But I, I just felt it was important to bring up that report based upon, you know, our comments this morning and from Jarvis Thompson.
So, Commissioner Burstein, I just have a question. So is, but the intention is recreational?
Yes, I, I think the area, yeah. And I don't know exactly how this process will go with the residential thing. I think it could be saying that some areas could be considered for residential, but that'd be another whole process. I guess when I got involved in this thing, I was very concerned that there would be no possibility of residential. And there are some areas that are suitable for residential, and one in particular, it's, it's across the Gunflint Trail from everything else, you'd have safety issues connecting it, so there could be some school easement that would be needed on the south, but, and I'm not necessarily that, necessarily saying that that is going to be residential, but I think at this point in the process, I don't think we should preclude or exclude the possibility of it. Because we have a shortage of housing that's in our future, if we're not right now, and so for us to create. And so for us to create more parkland when we need that, and there are 52 identified areas in the county that one referred, I think, last few of those identified, but still, I just feel strongly, and people could let me know if they disagree, that we should not just go automatically by excluding it.
Right. And the 52 parcels that we identified as buildable, many of them are privately owned and the owners are not into selling and turning them into housing. So I mean, we just literally looked at a map of the entire county and wetlands and everything else and said, here's areas where you could build. Then we zoomed in and said, oh, that's owned by federal, state, local government. And so we have probably two of the lots is what we ended up with that we could actually feasibly obtain and build on. So you're right, we do have a lack of housing areas.
Also, I just want to comment that in developing the vision statement that we worked on, we're sort of thinking about the terms amenities and that, you know, it might not be just housing, it might be some other kind of construction. It could be, you know, you know, some kind of something for yurts or for some kind of visitor housing or something like that. Or, you know, a visitor center, a regional hub or a conference center. That's been some talk about having a conference center, but that's all early, early in this process. But we are soliciting input from the community and that will happen in the future.
So it will be a transparent, inclusive process?
Yes.
Nothing has been set in stone?
No.
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify, the only thing that's been set in stone, the only action that's been taken is an application was made to designate that area as an area of regional significance. And that is a process that we worked with, that we worked through last year, and those are the base guidelines that we're working with. They're also the guidelines that make this site available to legacy funds for development. And so now, now that the first step of designating that as a regionally significant area, then this next process, this next steering committee is the result of that. Okay. Now what is the best use of that property and what fits in there and what's good for the community? So it's, it's all, it all flows from the fact that we already walked through a process to have that area designated as regionally significant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner reports?
I think I'm attending a meeting on Thursday for the Minnesota Agency on Aging, Up and Portage, on elder caregiving, another drug presentation from the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes, I will be attending that too. I'm quite interested in, you know, on my list, I have some Grand Portage things, so when I have a chance, I'd like to meet up there. But I'm more specifically interested in the drug issues and I've been attending some sessions up there. And I think that that will be helpful as we get into the J O, you know, RFP, which I'm on that group. We haven't met yet, but so how does that fit in? That could be part of that process, I'm not sure, but it, but I think we should have a strong connection with the Grand Portage and I'm doing my part to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Sterling? Well, I just was reading through the Arrowhead Regional Corrections and I'm hoping that Myron will have a description of his impression at their health board meeting in November, especially on the probation. I think that's very interesting with the counties. So I'm sure you'll do some type of report, but especially on the probation within all the different counties to be interpreted, I thought was very interesting.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Just for information for my fellow commissioners, tomorrow, October 25th, Cook County Schools would like to invite you to join our annual effort to unite against bullying. You are encouraged to wear orange and bring awareness to the importance of building a community of kindness, acceptance and inclusion. Together we can show our support and pledge to do our part by ending bullying. Just so you all know where that's at.
So...
Excuse me. Madam Chair, thank you. Where is this and when?
Well, interestingly...
Yes.
It doesn't show a time on here, which I thought it did when it was originally up. I will check into that and let you know, but they posted it on their Facebook page that they were doing this.
For tomorrow?
Yep. Yep, so I will try and get more information. I thought it was listed in this post. I'm sorry about that.
So what we know is we could wear orange.
Wear orange in support of I S D 166.
In support of anti-bullying.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
How's that?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that.
Anything else? Commissioner DuKirk?
I'm on.
You're on the radio and there are several people on each today. But the other pieces that we will break at this time and we will reconvene at 11:00 AM to meet with our representatives, Rob Eklund and Senator Tom Bach. Thank you. Not a journey or recessing?
Recessing.
Okay.
I can get by. I gain weight, but not that way.
It gets to be that one. I have to rethink.
How are you? Welcome to the work lab.
I ultimately like my stomach, but the thing is, my stomach's a little bit, somebody should know. It's kind of a funny thing. One place where I've been threatened to be shot. Seriously. I have to say, my sister's...
Just the one place that...
My car, they're all still...
Yes. They're quite $20.
You know, with that train my husband had, I just don't know.
She wants to get in all of this.
Let's reconvene. Join us. Join us.
We've just got news that Senator Bach is about 15 minutes out, but it'll probably take us 15 minutes just to get acquainted. So starting with you, Representative Eklund, perhaps you could introduce yourself and we'll just go right around the table and we'll all introduce ourselves.
Lucky you, Steve. Well, most of you know me, I'm Rob Eklund, State Representative for 3 A.M. from International Falls and I'm just happy to be up in Grand Ray in Cook County again.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Peterson, the Director of Development for the I R R B and happy to be here as well. Brought my lovely bride to Cook County for the first time, so.
Wow. First visit to the town.
First visit to the Wendy City.
I'm Bobby Disch, Commissioner District 4.
Thank you.
I'm Bev Wilkie, I'm out of the auditor's office, just taking minutes.
I'm Heidi DuKirk, Commissioner District 4. I'm also glad to still be here.
Jeff Cavill, Cook County Administrator.
Myron DeShaw, County Commissioner, District 2.
Jeff Gordon, Cook County Chairman of Commerce.
Brady Powers, Cook County Auditor.
Sue Hakes, Youth and Government Advisor at the Y and also on the Advisory Board for rural and American Indigenous Women in Leadership.
Pollard Anholm, I'm a member of the public, but I'm also DFL, Cook County Party Treasurer.
And you met me. It's making sense, Steve's wife.
I'm Mary Somis, the Director of the Cook County Grand Ray E D A.
Ted Nelson, Director of the Cook County Land Services.
Jenny Sterling, County Commissioner, District 5.
We could, yeah.
No, stand tall, adult supervision.
And you do a great job of that.
Linda Jerk, Executive Director of Visoka County and also a board member for the Cook County Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
And I'm Jan Severson with the Cook County Commissioners and Board Chair at this current time. So we...
And Patrick.
And Patrick, yes. Without Patrick, none of this could happen, right? Because if you're not seen by the public, you don't exist. Which, you know, it's kind of our motto. You're not seen, you don't exist. So perhaps we could just start? Is there anything? And then just save your conversations that need to... I mean, if we don't get started, everybody else's schedules will get backed up. So let's just begin. So how's it going?
Well, things are, we're in a little bit challenging time in politics in the state of Minnesota right now. And most of you know, the Governor Lighton vetoed the legislative, not the K, the money to run the legislature, basically, because of what he called, what was called a poison bill that was in the state government finance bill that if he didn't, didn't sign the tax bill, then the Department of Revenue wouldn't be funded. So the governor found that and he signed, Lighton vetoed the legislative money and the majority party sued and won in district court. And then it was appealed to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court said, no, come on, let's be, play like big kids here and go to mediation, try to get it figured out. And they couldn't get it figured out in mediation, so right now we're waiting to find out what the Supreme Court's going to do, basically. So things like travel and stuff like that for constituent services is not being paid right now. I'm still keeping a log, just in hoping that maybe, maybe it'd be retro or something, you never know. But I'm still getting around the district, visiting folks. I'm not going to let that stop me because you guys hired me to get around and see what the projects are and what concerns are, so I'm not going to stay away from doing that. Thank goodness, there was what we call a carryforward in both the House and the Senate and that was, I don't know if you want to call it a slush fund, but essentially it was a pot of money that's allowing us to be able to pay our staff because Commissioner Kirk sent me a request here on something the other day and I had no clue what it was about. And so without staff, I forwarded to them and they got the answer that we needed. I don't know if it was the answer you were looking for, but it was an answer anyway.
Beautiful.
And so, because there's no way that I can personally know all the statutes and all the regulations and all that kind of stuff, so that's what we have staff there for. So thankfully the carryforward was there to keep paying our staff so we have those people down there to take care of us, so. So we'll see what happens. I heard some, a report on Minnesota Public Radio the other day that the governor is hopeful that we can get this resolved and I'm hopeful we can get it resolved because I think it makes us look foolish when the people that you folks elect run state government and take care of your needs are fighting and bickering and over things like this. So we'll see, we'll see where it goes. Session starts on February 20th, I believe, somewhere right in there. It's going to be the traditional short session. The finances haven't been, the projections haven't been coming in as good as they have in the past, so unless things really change, I really doubt that there'll be any kind of supplemental budget will come forward. And even if they do change, I'm not sure the majority party's going to want to have a supplemental budget. So I think it'll be mostly policy and bonding this year is what we'll be working on, so. And as you all know, there's several bonding projects I'm not long enough to know that we'll be advocating for, so. Be looking at some of those today. And in a nutshell, that's what's going on, so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So Steve, maybe you can speak to what's going on in your world and then we'll open it up so that people can ask questions.
Sure. So a little closer to home. At the agency, our budget this year, and our budget starts, as the state budget does, July 1. So we're into about halfway through our current budget. And as most of you probably remember, last year, a lot of the mines were down. And we use a three-year averaging. We get a portion of the TAC and I production tax that comes into our agency. And so we have, we had a down year this year in our budget. Next year it'll be even lower, but then we'll start going back up because of the averaging. So fortunately, or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, when the mines don't hit 30 million tons of production, they don't get the rebate, the T E D F money. So that was about 11 and a half million dollars that they did not receive this year that we were able to hang on to. Otherwise, our budget would have been totally decimated. So that being said, we are able to still have a pretty healthy public works budget, which was about 6 and a half million dollars. And we have a pretty good business development budget that's available yet. So with the help of our board on Thursday, we've got some great projects for Cook County or down the shore coming. And I think most of you are aware of those, some housing and I've been working with Mary on those, the water line that boots in, the housing. What else do we have in there, Mary?
I think those are the only...
Three? I thought there was three projects.
Can we have the airport?
Airport's not in this one?
Airport's done. And I think those are going to be two.
Okay. So we, we funded those or we will fund those, I'm assuming, because they're great projects. And we're looking at other projects for the region up here as we go forward and continue to have board meetings as needed. We're going to be spending about half of our public works budget at this coming meeting, provided the board approves all those and the commissioner agrees with us. I can answer any questions you might have on specific projects or funding cycles, but... I got one thing to add on the T E D F money. The mining, the mining companies came after it hard last year, even though they didn't meet their production toll and we were able to keep that from happening. At the legislature, it was a tough battle, but we didn't feel that it was right for them to come after money since they didn't meet their production toll. And I certainly, I certainly feel that they could have, all they would have had to do was start T TAC up a couple of weeks earlier and they would have it done, so. And we let them know that loud and clear, so.
And that's the money that they can then reinvest in the facilities to upgrade things and update things and keep cost efficient.
That's correct, yeah. So, I mean, it's good and bad. You like your companies to continually upgrade too, but it's in statute, so we held firm to it, so. So we'll be submitting some legislative language to these folks in St. Paul on the T E D F statute. We're working on that now to clean it up a little bit and make it, you know, more specific as to what should be done with that money.
Other questions?
Rob mentioned bonding and projects from Cook County that are in the bonding bill for next year. In the D N R bonding, there's 2.1 million, I believe, is the figure for the public water access in the southwest corner of Grand Ray Harbor, which is a really important project, not only for creating a safer way to especially get boats or larger boats off the lake in bad weather, but also it, because it moves a D N R Grand Ray Agreement on Park from Artist's Point over to the new water access, frees up Artist's Point for the city of Grand Ray to consider new uses. So it's a hugely important project, not only for the water, but also for what it does at Artist's Point. And also was one of the impetus that caused City Grand Ray to create these new buildings on the outskirts of town, up at Tom, Tomoda. Second is bonding for the Gitchagami Trail. There's a...
Morning, everybody.
Morning. So would you like to join us down here? You get a microphone.
This wind is going to bring the ducks down. I won't tell my uncle a joke. Good morning. Good morning.
Sorry, we can't say anything, but we're grateful for your...
No, thank you. Thanks for your patience. I had one stop to make in Virginia and when I got there, the guy wasn't at work yet, so.
We won't need you.
I bet you I know who that was, Tom, but I'm not going to say it. No, and he wasn't there when I left because I waited.
So Jeff, do you want to finish your...
The other piece of bonding in the next year that's really important for Cook County is bonding for the Gitchagami Trail. The piece from Cutface Creek to Grand Ray, I believe, is scheduled for construction this next summer, but there's a piece from the bottom...
Patrick, none of this could happen, right? Because if you're not seen by the public, you don't exist. Which, you know, it's kind of our motto. You're not seen, you don't exist. So, perhaps we could just start? Is there anything? And then just save your conversations that need to... I mean, if we don't get started, everybody else's schedules will get backed up. So, let's just begin. So, how's it going?
Well, things are... We're in a little bit challenging time in politics in the state of Minnesota right now. And most of you know, the governor line item vetoed the legislative... Not the K, the money to run the legislature, basically. Because of what he called, what was called a poison pill that was in the state government finance bill. That if he didn't sign the tax bill, then the Department of Revenue wouldn't be funded. So, the governor found that and he signed... Line item vetoed the legislative money. And the majority party sued and won in district court. And then it was appealed to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court said, "No, come on, let's be, play like big kids here. Go to mediation, try to get it figured out." And they couldn't get it figured out in mediation. So, right now, we're waiting to find out what the Supreme Court's going to do, basically. So, things like travel and stuff like that for constituent services is not being paid right now. I'm still keeping a log, just in hoping that maybe it'd be retro or something. You never know. But I'm still getting around the district, visiting folks. I'm not going to let that stop me because you guys hired me to get around and see what the projects are and what concerns are. So, I'm not going to stay away from doing that. Thank goodness, there was what we call a carryforward in both the House and the Senate. And that was, I don't know if you want to call it a slush fund, but essentially, it was a pot of money that's allowing us to be able to pay our staff. Because Commissioner Kirk sent me a request here on something the other day, and I had no clue what it was about. And so, without staff, I forwarded to them. They got the answer that we needed. I don't know if it was the answer you were looking for, but it was an answer anyway.
Beautiful.
And so, because there's no way that I can personally know all the statutes and all the regulations and all that kind of stuff. So, that's what we have staff there for. So, thankfully, the carryforward is there to keep paying our staff. So, we have those people down there to take care of us. So, we'll see what happens. I heard some report on Minnesota Public Radio the other day that the governor is hopeful that we can get this resolved. And I'm hopeful we can get it resolved because I think it makes us look foolish when the people that you folks elect run state government and take care of your needs are fighting and bickering and over things like this. So, we'll see where it goes. Session starts on February 20th, I believe, somewhere right in there. It's going to be the traditional short session. The finances haven't been... Projections haven't been coming in as good as they have in the past. So, unless things really change, I really doubt that there'll be any kind of supplemental budget that'll come forward. And even if they do change, I'm not sure the majority party's going to want to have a supplemental budget. So, I think it'll be mostly policy and bonding this year is what we'll be working on. So, and you all know, there's several bonding projects on that. Long enough for that we'll be advocating for. So, we're going to be looking at some of those today. And in a nutshell, that's what's going on. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
So, Steve, maybe you can speak to what's going on in your world?
Sure.
And then we'll open it up so that people can ask questions.
So, a little closer to home. At the agency, our budget this year, and our budget starts, as the state budget does, July 1. So, we're into about halfway through our current budget. And as most of you probably remember, last year, a lot of the mines were down. And we use a three-year averaging. We get a portion of the TAC and I production tax that comes into our agency. And so, we have... We had a down year this year in our budget. Next year, it'll be even lower. But then, we'll start going back up because of the averaging. So, fortunately, or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, when the mines don't hit 30 million tons of production, they don't get the rebate, the TEDF money. So, that was about 11 and a half million dollars that they did not receive this year that we were able to hang on to. Otherwise, our budget would have been totally decimated. So, that being said, we were able to still have a pretty healthy public works budget, which was about six and a half million dollars. And we have a pretty good business development budget that's available yet. So, with the help of our board, on Thursday, we've got some great projects for Cook County or down the shore coming. And I think most of you are aware of those. Some housing, and I've been working with Mary on those. The water line at Lutzen, the housing. What else do we have in there, Mary?
I think those are beyond me.
Three? I thought there was three projects.
Can we have the airport?
Airport's not in this one?
Airport's done. And I think those are beyond me too.
Okay. So, we funded those, or we will fund those, assuming, because they're great projects. And we're looking at other projects for the region up here as we go forward. And continue to have board meetings as needed. We're going to be spending about half of our public works budget at this coming meeting, provided the board approves all those and the commissioner agrees with us. I can answer any questions you might have on specific projects or funding cycles, but...
I got one thing to add on the TEDF money. The mining companies came after it hard last year, even though they didn't meet their production toll. And we were able to keep that from happening. At the legislature, it was a tough battle. But we didn't feel that it was right for them to come after money since they didn't meet their production toll. I certainly feel that they could have. All they would have had to do is start T-TAC up a couple of weeks earlier. They would have it done. So, and we let them know that loud and clear.
And that's the money that they can then reinvest in the facilities to upgrade things and update things and keep cost efficient.
That's correct, yeah. So, I mean, it's good and bad. You like your companies to continually upgrade too. But it's in statute, so we held firm to it.
So, we'll be submitting some legislative language to these folks in St. Paul on the TEDF statute. We're working on that now to clean it up a little bit and make it, you know, more specific as to what should be done with that money.
Other questions?
Rob mentioned bonding and projects from Cook County that are in the bonding bill for next year. In the DNR bonding, there's 2.1 million, I believe, is the figure for the public water access in the southwest corner of Grand Marais Harbor, which is a really important project, not only for creating a safer way to especially get boats or larger boats off the lake in bad weather, but also it, because it moves a DNR Grand Marais agreement on Parkland from Artist Point over to the new water access, frees up Artist Point for the city of Grand Marais to consider new uses. So, it's a hugely important project, not only for the water, but also for what it does at Artist Point. And also, was one of the impetus that caused City Grand Marais to create these new buildings on the outskirts of town, up at Tomtumota. Second is bonding for the Gitchikami Trail. There's a...
Morning, everybody.
Morning. So, would you like to join us down here? You get a microphone.
This wind is going to bring the ducks down. I won't tell my uncle a joke. Good morning.
Sorry, we can't say hello to you, but we're grateful for your...
No, thank you. Thanks for your patience. I had one stop to make in Virginia. And when I got there, the guy wasn't at work yet, so...
I bet you I know who that was, Tom, but I'm not going to say it.
No, and he wasn't there when I left because I waited.
So, Jeff, do you want to finish your...
The other piece of bonding in the next year that's really important for Cook County is bonding for the Gitchikami Trail. The piece from Cutface Creek to Grand Marais, I believe, is scheduled for construction this next summer. But there's a piece from the bottom of Lutzen Ski Hill into Lutzen is in the bill for next year, as well as quite a bit of money for completion through Tofti. So, those are the main things in the bonding bill that... And my phone's ringing. That's it.
Okay, well, same way down town. So, we've already run through and done introductions. So, perhaps you can introduce yourself, like people don't know you.
Tom Bach, I'm a member of the state senate. And Cook County has been in my legislative district since I was first elected in 1994. So, I always enjoy coming up the shore because as I travel along, starting actually at the Lester River Bridge with the Duluth Sanitary Sewer Project, all along the way, I can find things I recognize that somehow had some little hand in making some things happen. So, it's a pretty enjoyable drive for me over the years. I just will say, you guys all do a great job making this a very warm place for people to come and visit because I hear it all the time at the Capitol. So, I've often said, it's about more than the scenery. It's about the experience that people have interacting with the people that they meet here that make a large part of what makes this area so special. So, thanks for doing that. And it's part of the reason that we're successful getting some projects for the region is people at the Capitol generally have a good feeling about Lake and Cook County especially. So, I don't have a lot to have legislatively. I don't know if you want to talk about that at all yet. I would differ with the governor a little bit in that we had a pretty successful legislative session. It has... Of course, it's easier when you have one-party control. It's always harder when you have divided government. But, you know, in '15, the '15 budget, we had divided government. And we had a pretty successful session. Put some significant new money into economic development and into early childhood and K-12 and higher ed. That was when I was the majority leader of the senate. The '17 session was different because I became the minority leader and the Republicans controlled the senate by a 34-33 margin right now. I will say that Paul Gazelka, the new majority leader, is a really good honorable guy. He was good to work with. It was always fair. And we ended up with a pretty good budget in '17. Put some significant new money into K-12 again, probably not quite enough into higher ed. Hope to be able to do more there this year. But some new money into county program aid and local government aid for cities. All in all, I think, a pretty successful session. The only real problem, I think, if there was a problem with the session, because we did a $995 million bonding bill. And I've been talking with the speaker about doing another one about that size again this year, which would be a really big deal. But the tax bill that we passed the last day was a little bit too big and might not be sustainable going forward. It costs about six, a little north of $600 million in the biennium that we're in. But that grows to about $900 million the next biennium. So, that's a lot of additional spending in the tax area of the budget. I actually very publicly asked the governor to veto the tax bill. I still think he should have. I think he made a mistake there. And you'll notice, since he signed it, he's been crying foul that the bill was too big. So... And ended up vetoing the legislature's budget. So, the legislature, right now, is spending our carryforward funds, money that we have just kind of on the bottom lines, one-time money, in order to kind of limp along. The senate will be out of money in early December. And unless we access some other funds, we will lay off 435 people. And the senate will shut down in December. There is an alternative to that happening. There is a piece of the legislature's budget called the Legislative Coordinating Commission. And it is where we do the joint functions of the House and the senate. Things like our legislative auditor is paid for there, the LCCMR that you're familiar with, the things that we jointly do at the House, the Pension Commission. That appropriation is about $17 million a year to the LCC. I'm sorry, this is all really inside baseball, but this is pretty serious if the senate actually shuts down.
What does that affect counties? If the senate actually shuts down?
I don't know that it will. Except that there'll be no constituent services for anybody that has a problem.
Right, like Rob said, I sent him an email the other day, and he had his staff pull an answer.
Yeah, that's pretty serious. Because it's not just all the partisan staff, it's all the nonpartisan staff. So, we could, and I have talked to the other leaders about potentially taking the second year of the biennium of the LCC. And because that starts on July 1st, you could take that second year. And it's within our authority to move that over to the House and senate to keep ourselves operating. It's never been done. And, but we've never been in this situation before either. The majority leader, Paul Gazelka, really doesn't want to do that. He's very worried about the precedent of that. If I was king, I would do it. I mean, I'm just, I'm not going to lay off the entire state senate for some purity test of taking the second year of the LCC's funding. So, I would access the money. I don't know if we're going to. It's not my decision to make. And that would keep us going until we get into session after the first of the year. And then, we simply would have to pass a bill to restore the funding to the LCC in the second year. So, there is a vehicle, as we kind of get closer to this, you'll see more in the press about it, to keep the legislature functioning. And this is just all happening because the governor decided to veto the legislature's budget. And when that, because he thought the tax bill was too big. You can imagine. And then, so the legislature, after our budget was vetoed, went to court. And to say you can't eliminate a branch of government. We have three branches of government. They're constitutional. You're essentially eliminating one. And we prevailed at the district court level. The district court ruled that the governor, yes, he had line item veto authority, but not to do an unconstitutional act. And essentially, defunding the legislature would be eliminating the branch. So, we prevailed at the district court level. And the governor refused to let that stand and decided to appeal to the Supreme Court. So, that case is actually in front of the Supreme Court now, whether that veto was constitutional or not. They should have ruled by now. They ordered us into mediation the last week of September, which, after a day and a half, failed. That was not a surprise to me. And both sides are pretty dug in. So, we'll see what the Supreme Court does. It's true, the governor has line item veto authority over appropriations. And the question kind of is, but can you eliminate a branch of government essentially? Does that violate the other constitutional provisions? So, the Supreme Court, I can tell you, doesn't like the situation that they're in. They are the third branch. What they also know is it's risky to not side with the legislature. I mean, the next budget that comes in 2019, this governor will be gone. But this legislature still will be there, and they control the court's budget. Whether the court's going to get an increase or no money at all. So, they're not envious of the situation that they're in. But it is a pretty interesting time, for sure. Because talk about unprecedented.
If it doesn't happen before, ever?
Well, the... I don't know where the governor got the idea, for sure. I just, I know in the final couple of days, I had been lobbying him to veto the tax bill because it was clear to me it was going to be way too big. And I said, "You know, they haven't treated you that well. I don't think you should feel bad about doing that." And he said, "Well, I have something I'm going to do that will even things up." So, I mean, he obviously had thought of this. This wasn't a last-minute thing. He had thought about it. So, I had saw my staff take a look. And as it turns out, back in April, the New Mexico governor did this. And it was a front page of the USA Today story. So, it wasn't the governor's idea. He read it, someone on his staff read it in USA Today, and that's where the idea sure came from.
Fake news.
But this is very dangerous. Very, very dangerous. I mean, if a governor doesn't like a ruling of the Supreme Court, does he just veto the Supreme Court's funding? I mean, do future governors decide that if they can't get their way on the budget, they're just going to veto the legislature's funding after July 1st? We're in very uncharted water. And the precedent issue does matter at the legislature. And so, I don't know how we're going to end up for sure. We'll see what the Supreme Court does. Sorry for spending so much time so far in the weeds, but it's pretty serious. And you're going to hear more about it as we start. As the Supreme Court makes a decision, or we get to a position where the legislature shuts down.
So, what happened in the other state?
Welcome to my world.
What happened with the other state? Did they come to an agreement?
They came to some agreement at some point. But where Minnesota is different than a lot of places. Wisconsin, for example, this could never happen in. Because in Wisconsin, they have a provision on July 1st of a continuing resolution that government continues to fund at its current level if there's not an agreement reached. A lot of states have that. Minnesota does not. The speaker's actually been lobbying me to put that provision in Minnesota law that if an agreement can't be reached by July 1st, we do something similar to Wisconsin and just kind of keep going. That sounds sensible. But I really, to date at least, haven't supported it. It is an end date that drives compromise and drives a deal. And when, and politics today is pretty toxic, as you know, both sides. And if no one ever wants to make a deal and you don't have an end time, I don't know how you ever find a resolution to things. And right now, July, you know, we got a new German date in May, which is the end. But the real end is July 1st, when the state budget expires and you need a new one. If you really just continue to extend that, I'm a little concerned how you... When or how do you ever get a deal? Because if you don't want to increase any state spending at all, that's your reason for being in the legislature, you could accomplish that by just never making a deal and just continue everything funding at its current levels. So, as attractive as it might sound, I don't think it's necessarily helpful in kind of driving consensus on, you know, what the next three-year budget's going to look like.
Well, I assume it's similar to what's happened at federal level too, where they always have continuing resolutions to keep the budget going, and they don't accomplish anything. So, I can see where you're coming from on that. What kind of deals are you going to make?
So, the one thing we did this year that I was one of a small number of Democrats that supported it, very small number, actually, is we put around $250 million of general fund into transportation. So, we essentially rolled it over into the highway fund to spend it on roads and bridges. It's terrible public policy because as soon as the state has a budget shortfall, that's the first money the legislature's going to claw back. Because you can always delay investments in transportation projects. So, but because we had some money around, there was enough money now, in this biennium, to spend some general fund money on transportation. So, we did that. It was the sales tax on things like auto parts, tires, things related to vehicles. But currently today, that goes into the general fund, gets spent on general fund purposes. I would not be surprised if the legislature decides to put a measure on the ballot next November, a year from now, that permanently dedicates that revenue stream of sales tax to transportation. Because it's once it would, if the people vote on it, it becomes constitutionally dedicated. Then, that flow of money will go into the highway fund, which will help counties because some of that money comes out to counties and cities over 5,000 and then to the state's trunk highway system. I've got kind of mixed feelings about it. But I'm trending a little bit more that way because we just haven't been able to get a gas tax. And the public is so opposed to a gas tax. Even though the money's constitutionally dedicated to something, they support transportation. The legislature hasn't had the courage to raise the gas tax. We did it twice in the senate. We did it in 2013 and again in 2015. But we couldn't get the House to do it. Now, we're in the, I'm in the minority today, and maybe that's part of the reason, is those gas tax votes that I had the cock at stake. But, you know, I'm kind of of the opinion, you know, someone does have to lead. And we have to fix our transportation system, and it won't get any cheaper. So, if we're just never going to be able to get there on a gas tax, we've got to find another way. And if that's the sales tax, then that's what it is. Now, the whole K-12 community's going to hate that idea because it's going to take north of $250 million a year offline, outside of the general fund, and put it over in the highway fund. The one good thing about that, using that sales tax money, is it is inflated, right? Because as those parts and tires and everything go up in price, the sales tax goes up. So, it'll put in some built-in inflation into some portion of the money that goes to the Highway Trust Fund. So, from that standpoint, it probably makes some sense where, you know, the gas tax loses its buying power as inflation eats away at it and as cars get more fuel-efficient. So, you may see something on that. The speaker and I have talked about that. The majority leader and I have talked about that. But there'll be a lot of opposition from the public employee unions because, you know, they need state general fund money to... I don't know where the counties are going to weigh in for sure. They probably would prefer a gas tax, but we just can't seem to find a way to get there. I don't know of any other constitutional amendments that anybody's really seriously considering putting on the ballot. The one that I actually like, that I don't believe is going to get on there, is one on election of judges. You all turn the ballot over, right? And see all those races that you don't know anybody anything about? And so, but the constitution requires that they face the voters. But there is a constitutional amendment that would take judges out of the election cycle. And when their term was up, they would go in front of a peer review panel of other judges. And then, that peer review panel would decide whether they should face the voters or get another term. And it just seems like a better process to me, that they be evaluated by their peers than by the voters that don't know anything about what's on that side of the ballot. But now, that seems like that should happen. And I think people would vote for it, except the legislature's afraid of it. It's never really moved in the House or the senate because they're fearful of the campaign literature that would appear, that would say, Representative Eklund took your right away to vote for judges. That, and the reason you see a lot of negative literature is it works. And until it quits working, you're going to continue to see more and more of it in your mailbox. We're fortunate, up here at least, in our local races, that, maybe it's our Scandinavian ancestry or something, but the negative mail really hasn't hit in local races up here like you see it in more competitive races. But in more competitive legislative races, it's not unusual in the last two weeks to get a dozen, 15 pieces of negative mail on each candidate in your mailbox. People get pretty, I think, turned off by it, actually. And understandably so. But I've talked way too long.
Pardon me? No. I can if you want me to.
Questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few weeks ago, Association of Minnesota companies started their first district meeting. So, we were District One. So, we were at that meeting... So, we were at that meeting. And we passed some resolutions which we will bring forth to the December AMC. So far, we've been talking about having a January meeting, which we do in St. Paul, coming to the Capitol and having a tour of the new building and so forth. And I'm wondering, will either one of you be able to be there?
We, I shouldn't say this because this might not be accurate. When we adjourned, we adjourned until February 20th. So, based on the adjournment resolution, the legislature will not be in session.
So, we'll basically have a tour, which will be great. So, when you were here last time, Rob, you made a very good point about different issues that we're interested in in the North to meet with legislators in the Capitol from other parts of the state who also have the same issues. Because it goes beyond our county. And I thought that was a very good suggestion. And so, sometime when we are there and legislature is in session, you suggested that we get a book that has all the names of the legislators and so forth. Now, is that gonna change for next year? Will there be some new elections going on in November for anybody?
Not in November. Unless there's any special elections that come between if somebody resigns or, but other than that, it'll be, if there's any changes, they'll be minor.
Okay. So, we can get a copy of that at the Capitol?
Yep. Get what we call the Green Book?
The Green Book.
Yep. And that's got everybody's bios in it, committees are on and all that kind of stuff. Phone numbers and emails and all that.
That is, I appreciate people taking the time to come down and do that because that is very helpful for, you know, we've worked pretty hard on Cook County Higher Ed and all the trips to Polley made down over the years. And Jim recently, with her and the money that people invest in Judy Erickson to help lobby is very, very helpful. And kind of putting a face on what's on the sheet of paper is really, really helpful. Because people have the empathy for this area. But it's helpful if you could put a face on it. So, it's helpful.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Tom and Rob. It's deep for coming today. And thanks for always being accessible on the phone and coming here today. And the work that you've done and the funds that you've sent our way over the years, it's truly appreciated. I have a couple of questions. One, and I've already asked Rob about this, but there are concerns about the individual market on healthcare. And last year, you took some action to reduce that by 25% for people that fell into that category. Very much appreciated. Hopefully, you can do something there. Take a look at that somehow, fix that number because it's a tough one. And then the second thing is Governor Dayton's in the news today as supporting the PolyMet project. He's behind it. And I was just wondering what your perspective of, in reality, what does that mean for the project? And how does that influence the PolyMet proposal going forward from today with his support? What does that, what does that mean?
Well, the governor has, since I've been there, has always been in support of the PolyMet project. The first year we were down there, we appropriated money for the lawsuits that were, were gonna happen, that we know are gonna happen as the permitting process goes forward. But I think where this whole thing is at right now is we gotta follow the science. And if the permitting can, if through permitting and that sort of thing shows that it can be done, then the project will move forward. But we're, we're still a long ways. I mean, what are they, in their fourth or fifth water permit that they're on right now or something like that? So, we're, I mean, we're still a long ways from any shovel in the ground for PolyMet. But I think it's just the governor reaffirming that, that he wants the process to move forward as, as it is.
Well, the, the governor's actually always supported PolyMet. What he understands is there is a tremendous non-Ferris mining deposit in Northern Minnesota, the largest in North America. It's very large and potentially economically is very significant. But if you're ever gonna develop that, I think starting in a small baby step like PolyMet is the way to start. There's an existing tailings basin there from the old LTV mine. It's in the Lake Superior watershed. It's 130 miles to Lake Superior. So, even if there was a problem, there's a lot of, lot of room to mitigate it. But starting small, I think, is the way to do that. That's why he's always supported it. And we'll see what happens. I mean, but we just need to prove that we can do the waste disposal with the, with the potential sulfide bearing waste material. And if it can be done safely, then, you know, it's a good project. But we're gonna find that out on a brownfield site at LTV. Twin metals that the governor has been against is a much different proposal, much, much larger, but underground. So, no real surface disturbance other than, you know, the buildings you're gonna, you're gonna build. And one of the advantages of twin metals is it's underground. And anything, I believe, anything that would be potential sulfide bearing waste will go back underground because that's how underground mining is done. About 50% of the waste on underground mining operation actually goes back underground. And it's what builds the levels. And you always mine underneath. When you mine out an area, you put the waste in and you rebuild and then you mine underneath again. So, kind of like build concrete shelves down there with all of the old waste. So, so, and we don't know what that mine plan looks like. But if you look at other underground mining operations, that's how they do it. So, but that's a conversation for a long time from now because we still need to try figure out the PolyMet thing and see if it can be done on a very small scale. But the twin metals deposit, just the one little maturi deposit, they call it, they're looking at, is, has a hundred year mine life for about 1,000 people. So, it's, and it's just one of the small piece of this whole deposit up here. So, it's really big. But we need to prove the waste disposal part. I don't think there's a lot of disagreement about the rest of the project. But if we could prove the waste, I can tell you what I would like to see happen that I probably will never live long enough to see. But, but we could build the lowest carbon footprint copper in the world here. And if you really care about the environment, you care about what the carbon footprint of the things you buy is. And what we should do is do the mining, do the processing, build the pipe, build the wire, build the, the transportation distribution center and send out the finished pipe and wire from Northern Minnesota. And it would be the lowest carbon footprint copper in the world. If you really want to take a look at a global view of what our, what our footprint on carbon is. But who knows if we could ever get to something like that? But environmentally, that would be the best, the best project in the world. But that's way, we can't even build the test holes right now to figure out what's down there. But I guess you have to have a vision, right? But if it ever happens, it'll happen beyond me. But it, it is a little bit frustrating. And I gotta tell you, Tom Rukavina and I have had our disagreements over the years. But he made one of the best statements about non-Ferris mining that I've ever seen. And it was at a hearing in the Twin Cities, big public hearing. And he held up his cellphone. And I think he said there's like 26 different metals in this phone. And if you're against mining, there are people at the backs of the door. And when you go, please drop your cellphones in. Because it all comes from somewhere. And it was a pretty remarkable statement, you know? And we all think, we all think that renewable energy's good. You know, there's three tons of copper in every windmill. It has to come from someplace. And if we could do it in the best environmental process in the world, Minnesota should be really proud of that. We've got a lot of work to do to figure that out. But it's something that we could be just incredibly proud of and lead the world in how non-Ferris metals can be produced. But PolyMet's the first little step to see if we can figure it out. And so, it's, it's a pretty important project from that standpoint. Because you cannot, there's a lot of talk about recycling. If we just recycled more, if we just recycled more. But the worldwide, worldwide demand for copper is going by about 100,000 tons a year. Demand is growing as, as China and India industrialize for the most part. And you can't, you can't make up for increased demand. Yeah, you can keep moving around what you have. But where, where does the new material come from that industrializing an economy comes from? That's one of the challenges. And I think most of us probably believe in recyclables. But by itself, it's not gonna satisfy the world demand that's, that's out there.
And to that process, the agency, as most of you know, is not an enforcement or regulatory agency. But we do take a very active role in the mining sub-cabinet team that's, that's down in St. Paul. And that's, that's made up of some pretty intelligent folks. So, there's a lot of information that's filtered through on the PolyMets and the Ferris mines and everything else. And it should be reassuring to know that there's a lot of eyes on these projects. And it's not just PolyMet handing over something saying, we, we've made it. We're here. So, there's the DNRs on there and the EPA and the PCA and the health people. So, they look at these projects very closely and present their findings to these folks. And it's, it's a, it's a well-balanced team that, that looked at this stuff. So, it's reassuring. And one good thing that we're hoping that does come out of this is when they start mining, a five gallon pail of this stuff's gonna be equal to a railroad car full of taconite pellets. I mean, the value, the wealth. So, the IRRB hopes to get some of that and redistribute it back to you folks and make all your lives better as well. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed. We're optimistic, but there's a long way to go yet.
The, the problem that we've been talking about most here recently isn't considered a state responsibility yet or now. But you should know about it. And that is that our, our 5,200 people do not produce enough labor to support our tourism-based economy. And so, every summer, and actually to a small extent in the winter, we're importing a number of international workers under visa programs that are, it feels to us as though are at the whim of capricious decisions by the federal government. So, we've been talking or begun to talk about ways in which we could find what Bruce Kerfoot calls Plan B, which would not have us at the whim of the federal government. And our beginning discussions, the thing that really stood out most was that none of our employers, even the biggest ones that are here are pretty small, can do this alone. That we have to have a kind of communal discussion about how best to approach this. And I know that we're not unique. I know the Brainerd area and others have the same problem. And so, if there is a way that the state of Minnesota could consider helping those tourism-dependent areas that need a large number of seasonal workers to, to come together and figure out a way to do this better and, and not be at the whim of whether they're even gonna have a J-1 visa program or whether they're gonna cap H2Bs at 66,000 or allow people to return or whatever. That would be enormously important to us. And if there is an appropriate state role, boy, that would be great.
You know, Jim, we've been, we have been talking for years about workforce housing. This, this probably is not unique to the North Shore. I mean, the J-1 visa program is pretty unique to the North Shore and Brainerd Lakes area. But the, the shortage of, of people with the skill set to meet the needs of your economy is not unique to Cook County. We have a problem just like this up in Roseville with Polaris, at Thief River with Digikey, at Warroad with Marvin Windows, down in Worthington with agricultural processing facilities down there. We've talked a lot about how, because of the wage gap, the wages won't support the debt service on housing or on rent, mortgage or rent. How can the state play a role to help make housing more affordable? Because that is clearly one of the big obstacles. And wages on the North Shore are probably, in this tourism business, are probably higher than the Iron Range because they have to be. Truth is, they're probably not high enough yet. But I think if wages were a little higher and housing were a little cheaper, we could get that workforce into balance. But, so I think it's a two-part thing.
I think that being so heavily tourism-based with our economy, it sometimes doesn't feel like, you know, you might have a server that's making really good money because they're working a couple serving jobs. They work in the summer, you know, in Grand Canyon. They'll go out to the resorts in the west end of the county. And it becomes back to, it goes back to the lender. And I think that some of our lending institutions in Cook County are a little bit more conservative, let's just say that. Because I do believe that the wages here could support a mortgage. It's just that when you look at somebody that has two jobs to pay that mortgage, it doesn't fit within the normal model of lending. So, there's that.
Well, and, or be it for me to come to the defense of banks or, or insurance companies. But, you know, in that whole mortgage foreclosure crisis yet, I mean, banking regulation changed. And they, community banks lost a lot of the flexibility they used to have. That's just the reality of, of where we are today. That whole subprime crisis that the country went through.
Let me give you an example of what the kind of thinking that we're doing is. The housing thing is recognized as always a problem. And we do still have that. But we have seasonal jobs. And someone suggested, why don't we try going to Puerto Rico, which gets ignored too much anyway, where they have a lot of people who are in the hospitality industry that are probably not gonna see those jobs come back for a very long time? And could we, what I spoke about working together was, can we find a way that we can pair up employers who need summer workers, the employers who need winter workers to create a full-time or year-round work environment so that we could get people from Puerto Rico who would be willing to come here?
Who are U.S. citizens.
Who are U.S. citizens and who really need the jobs. They're, they're not likely to come for three months. But if you could work out a way that you could provide them with year-round work. And yeah, we need, we really do need to address the housing issue. We, we, we need, we know that.
So, on the housing, kind of running crazy ideas. So, we're now at 58% seasonal. And I know you love the general tax that comes from our seasonal. And I'm not asking you to change the tax code on that. But a lot of these homeowners, summer vacation rentals, but some of them close their door. And if there was a tax code where here in Cook County, if you have long-term rental, you get non-residential homestead credit on your property. But that's year-round. What if we could change that to eight month or nine month? So, these people who leave who are seasonal, that covers our winter force. They get a little bit of a credit on their property tax by opening their doors and allowing people to stay in their houses during the season. Just a thought process, something to consider when you're looking at it.
You know, it, it depends on how much burden the county wants to take on. I mean, we could lower seasonal property taxes and be very popular in the Twin Cities among all those cabinets.
Change in how we classify it.
But, but ends up shifting onto the other properties in your taxing jurisdiction. So, it's, it won't be free. But, I mean, we could change, we could change the Monpa resort definition, right? And one of the criteria is you can't be open more than 250 days a year. We could change that. And, and significantly probably cut some property taxes. But, you know, you gotta kind of look at the model of how it shifts among all the homeowners and all the other small businesses in the community. So, we can certainly look at something. The only thing is it, it won't be free. It will cost Cook County residents and businesses.
Just looking for a different way to allocate it.
I do think it would be worth looking at whether you have created, perhaps even inadvertently, incentives to be seasonal. Because what we really need, we were talking to a woman who owns World Best Donuts yesterday. And they had been looking at a new building. And so, that would allow them to stay open all year long, which the other businesses in town who do stay open all year long and lose money so they can keep employing people, they could benefit if World Best Donuts were open all year. But it was the difficulty in getting staff that caused them to decide not to do that. So, that's the way it works.
I feel like it's the chicken and the egg though, you know? Because that was my question yesterday to some of our seasonal business people. Do you really want to be open? Or is this model satisfying you? And let's face it, as small business owners and entrepreneurs, when we say they stay open to lose money, that's not the case. They're not making the money that they make in June, July and August. They're still being able to float through their seasons. When, when Java Moose loses 20, 80% of their customers, they're still able to make it. And so, I think asking the tough questions when we talk about, when we talk about housing, we tend to start telling our own story up here and weaving our own story. So, asking And so asking those really tough questions, because at the table yesterday, the large resorts that hire a significant international workforce of J1 and H2Bs have housing built in. They're not struggling with the housing issue. It's the small World's Best Donuts and the grocery stores that are trying to find room for that, those four people that they need. And that's the balance. So back to what you said, you know, if you say let these people open their home, if I was to put my house on Devil's Track Lake into a vacation rental by owner, I'm not going to say, yeah, you can rent it for three months. Because I might want to come back and use it. You know, you, that's a really dedicated decision as a business model if you want to put a home up for that sort of thing. So I go back to the chicken and an egg and, and I just say, you know, you could say to World's Best Donuts, is that your business model to close in October and open in May? Because that's fine. If that's your business model, there's lots of seasonal businesses. But don't blame it on the workforce then. Or don't blame it on the fact that you don't have insulation. Don't, don't tell that story. Tell the truthful story that that's your business model and it works fine for you. Because I think sometimes that is the case.
But there's also an edginess. And because it, it was my business model to stay open year-rounds. Because I'm too lazy to hire a whole new workforce every year. My product is too sophisticated.
It's a perfect story.
I'm telling the truth, I'm too lazy. But, but the story that I don't lose money in the winter is still, it, I may break even some months, but it's taken years to get there. I mean, in the beginning, I told them.
You don't flip the switch on this one, exactly.
Yeah. But that, you know, three months in the summer makes it worth it, you know? And being consistently open helps tell the story that you're a credible business. But that only works for certain products. It doesn't work necessarily for donuts.
I don't know what time of the year you can't have a donut and I'm over here seeing them, so.
You're picking on D.
No. I love when other people have donuts I can just watch them.
So other questions?
I, in reference to the housing, I understand that some of the funds that are available for workforce housing through legislative allocations to Minnesota Housing Finance have a requirement that the development be hooked up to city water and sewer, which if, if there could be a way to enable some of those funds to be used outside of city limits would be very helpful to us. Because we have developable land that isn't in the city. City, Grand Marais is the only city that we have in Cook County, but a bunch of our jobs are in the west end and the east end.
Up the Gunland Trail.
And up the Gunland Trail, yes, thank you. And it would be really helpful to us to be able to access some of that funding, which has enabled us to begin our housing project here in Grand Marais. But we sure would love to be able to ask for more help.
That's, you know, we should talk about if there's a proposal we can move forward there because I, I understand that. And I think it was well-intended in that you wanted property redeveloped before you start just kind of building out sprawl and, and eating up green space. I think it was probably well-intended, but it probably doesn't fit every place. And I tell you, the classic recent example is the Ainsworth plant at Cook. There is a really good economic development program over at Deed that's got a lot of money in it. And, but they couldn't access that because you had to be located in a city. I mean, a lot of money. I mean, I don't know, what was it, 10 million? I mean, a lot of money that, that Ainsworth potentially could have put on that site. It had to be, if it wasn't in a city, it had to be an agricultural processing facility. Well-intended at the time, I'm sure. Well, guess what? Now the Ainsworth plant fits the definition. But we did it very narrowly to just include that one project. But there are a number of those kind of things that I think are well-intended, but over time probably should be revisited. So Mary, if you've got some thoughts on that, please jot them down and send us an email. We can take a look at, a look at that.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see who comes out against it. You do, you do find out why the law is the way it is when you actually introduce a bill, you'll find out it's working for somebody and that's why it's crafted that way.
I did that my first year down there. I put a bill in, helped Cushing County out on their solid waste transportation. And I, the next day I had 13 people in my office telling me how terrible that bill was.
Can I ask a silly question?
Okay. We have time for one silly question.
One silly question? I'm curious when we talk about our, our highway systems and why we don't ever institute just like one toll. And I don't know.
Can you handle toll?
Like, no, a toll road. Like when you're going from Duluth to Minneapolis, if you paid a dollar to use that highway, that Interstate 35? So sucks. I mean, like, I don't know. It feels like it's, I mean, I've traveled across this country to and fro and there's lots of really nice roads out there where there's tolls collected. Look at you, look at me like you're crazy. I said it was silly!
No one would like oneself a toll cave better, more than me. But I, I don't know on 35 whether there's issues with the federal government because it's their interstate highway. So whether they'd let us collect the money on their highway that they maintain and keep it for our purposes, I guess I don't know enough about toll roads to know about that. A lot of the places you see toll roads is because they're, they're not public roads. They're private roads. Private freeways. And that's how the owners of them pay for them.
Private for profit, so.
And that's usually the way those toll road proposals work, is a state decides to privatize their highway system and they allow for the successful vendor to charge a toll to, to maintain it.
And they'll carry it and...
Well, no, you pay on 35, Interstate 35, portions in different states crossing United States, so.
Yeah, and there may be some kind of a revenue sharing arrangement between the federal government and states, I don't know, but...
Private infrastructure, as soon as there's a little bit of profit margin, they'll just pull out and leave you sitting there with nothing.
It happened in, and I don't know the history of this well enough, but I remember when Indiana, Mike Pence country, right, before he was governor, they actually had serious financial budget problems. They sold off their highway system. They sold it. They sold the rights to it for like 20 or 30 years to some private company for, you know, a pretty significant amount of money and the whole project failed. And they ended, I believe they ended up with it back, but it, it, it didn't work.
I was just curious. Obviously a silly question.
At the risk of losing the majority of Olson Cook County. The gas tax is so frustrating. So frustrating because, you know, everybody wants the roads fixed. And sometimes I think we're just not that good at math and maybe myself included. But I can remember asking one of the people in my office when we were contemplating the gas tax a few years ago, I said, you know, Jackie, how, how many gallons of gas does your car hold? She said 13. I says, well, you know, how many times do you fill it up? She said, well, about twice a month. Well, I mean, you can do the math on that. Pick a dime a gallon, buck 30, so $2.60 a month to get our transportation infrastructure fixed. But, you know, I mean, gas moves around here, 10, 15 cents that I move and people just pay it. But, you know, I mean, because what choice do you have? But, and I will say of you commissioners, the half a cent local option sales tax, that is a perfect example. I don't know, maybe you've heard from a lot of people against it, but I have had not one email, not one email from Cook Lake or St. Louis County that implemented that. And they're paying a half a percent on everything they buy. It is way more than a gas tax would cost them over the course of a year if you're buying much of anything. But for some reason, the public views the sales tax as discretionary, that I only have to pay it if I buy something. But they don't view the gas tax that way, that you don't pay it on a day you don't drive your car, right? But so some, something's gotta happen on transportation things. You all remember when 61 was just an absolute horrible road with no shoulders on it. And thank goodness that Jim Oberstarr was in the position he was and we were able to make this a demonstration project and get this road improved. There are a lot of, there are a lot of needs around the state on transportation. And it's kind of one of those things you, we'd all just kind of take for granted. We drive over bridges and think they're safe and, you know, but it's one of the bigger challenges the state is facing. And I would, I would bet you, we, last week we submitted a bid for, to Amazon for Minnesota to be in contention for this new second headquarters. And the four leaders and the governors people got together and we kind of flushed out kind of what would it take to get us to first base? Because a lot of states are going to compete for it. So we put kind of a generic proposal together with no commitments on exactly what we'd be able to do, but we talked about the advantages of some several locations and I will bet you that wherever they put that thing, the transportation infrastructure is going to be one of the major considerations, that and workforce.
Judy Erickson says you needed over at higher ed.
I was gonna say.
Oh, I'll take the blame and done it was my fault.
I just had one more question for Steve. So earlier when you were talking, you talked about public works and the number there and then you talked about business development. I was just wondering if you could just give us a brief overview or what your thoughts are for strategic development or your strategic plan for business development in IRRB, things that we should be paying attention to specifically or might be interested in?
Sure. So on the business development side, what we do with that money typically is work with companies that are manufacturing or Tom mentioned the Ainsworth site up at Cook that's known by LP. We're working with companies like that to bring them into our region. And then we have a series of funding mechanisms within that program. Most of them are loans to businesses. We work with, with banks or we have direct financing. And those are based on, well, a good example, yesterday I was over in Sioux-Saint-Murray looking at a business that is, has an interest in Mount Mayor. And so we, we kind of put together a proposal, a loan package, if you will, where they'll come in and, and start manufacturing a product and then they pay the agency back over X number of years, much like a bank loan. And so we, we used to be strictly manufacturing and now we've kind of expanded that and we look at all applications as they come in and see if they are eligible. A lot of times they're not eligible for our program, so we'll turn them over to Deed, Entrepreneur Fund, Martha Foundation, we have other partners that we work with throughout the region. So if you have a business that is interested in expanding or locating, send them our way and we'll take a look at it. And then of course, the public works is the infrastructure side of it. And that's a grant usually to the community or the city.
Do you have a budget for the business development piece?
Yeah, it's about $5 million this year. That's what, what's in the pot. Obviously if there's a big project, you know, we have, we go back to our board and we have the DJA fund, which we can take money out of if the project warrants it.
Thank you so much.
Let me just say, you all should be so appreciative of the tremendous risk that Lutz and Mountains is taking.
Definitely.
I mean, they are taking a tremendous risk investing a lot of money. And a lot of it's yet, I'm sure. But, you know, the leaves are gone and they're about to become the gorilla of this economy soon again. And if something happens and they fail, we're going to have a lot bigger problems around here. So I just, I just, I gotta tell you, I deeply appreciate the risk that they're taking. And we're going there tonight, I think.
We are.
Well, yes, whether high or low.
If we don't get to higher ed, we'll be there.
In, in 50 minutes, we'll, we'll find out if we're riding the gondola or not.
It's pretty windy.
But we're still at that one.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any want to motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, give me a second.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.